4.8D, non-conforming lights records can be built as long as it complies with the dimensional requirements criteria in section 20-3.8 for two-story, I'm sorry, there's a typo in my report where it says E on the second page, it should be H 20.
Okay. Good evening, and thank you for being here. I'd like to call to order the South Miami City Commission meeting today on Tuesday, July 5th. And I hope that all of you will please turn off whatever cellphones or noise makers you may have, and silence them. And Madam Clerk, would you please call LaRolle?
Yes, Mayor Phillips?
Present.
Commissioner Harris? Commissioner Gill?
Present.
Commissioner Corey?
Present.
Commissioner Lehman, is he there?
He just walked in.
Okay. You have a quorum?
Thank you very much. I'd like to, before we begin, I'd like to rearrange the agenda a bit and have a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance before any of the other business. If anybody has any objections, please say so. Okay, then, please, everybody, let's have a moment of silence. Thank you. Would you all rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will begin tonight with a presentation by Kevin Greiner. Not on yet.
Kevin Greiner, 6891 Sunset Drive, proud South Miami resident. I'm here tonight with an interesting presentation. This is a project I've been working on as a volunteer with Sustainability Club at the University of Miami. It's a financing program that we've been working on to accelerate investment in solar energy. And we're very interested in developing this program. We're hoping that it brings solar affordability to households at the median income and below, which in the presentation you'll see is real critical to the region's future. I'm going to bring Hannah Waxman, who is president of the Sustainability Club, to make the presentation.
Hello, I'm Hannah Waxman, 131 Buttonwood Drive, Key Biscayne, 33149. And I am co-president of the University of Miami Sustainable Business Club. So, climate change is an existential crisis, both across the globe and specifically in Miami, where we have temperatures rising up to dangerous levels, and Miami is considered the second most vulnerable coastal city worldwide. Now, we have huge potential for solar energy. However, only 0.1% of Florida's power currently comes from solar. The solution is that we need to massively scale up investment in solar energy through local residential programs. Our Net Zero Neighborhood Project is on a mission to accelerate solar investment through local residential programs with the potential of a pilot project that would include 15 moderate-to-low-income households and help develop financing for them to join a local solar co-op. Our main project partners include the University of Miami Sustainable Business Club, which is comprised of graduate business students, Solar United Neighbors, which is a nonprofit that does solar co-ops across the nation, Rebuilding Together, that works with millions of dollars and helps finance home improvement projects across the county, as well as urban-centric analytics. There are many benefits to homeowners, including cost savings, improved health, increased home value, roof protection, tax incentives, and localized cost of energy. The biggest beneficiaries of this would be the homeowners. And we project over a 7-kilowatt system, assuming a 15-year loan period, there could be up to over $10,000 in savings for homeowners over the life of the loan, which would equate to over $25,000 in savings over the lifetime of the entire system. Now, additionally, there would be energy efficiency benefits because we would be partnering with Rebuilding Together to do a variety of energy retrofits for participating homeowners, which would reduce energy by up to 20%, 25%, and have additional health benefits for those homeowners. So, some of the common problems that are for financing these solar investments for this target group is that a lot of them do not have equity, and they have high interest rates due to low credit scores and high energy costs, because a lot of the homes currently do not have energy-efficient appliances, and they have not invested enough in energy efficiency retrofits. Our solution would be threefold, which would include interest rate write-downs from financing and foundations and investors, as well as improvement grants, and loan guarantees from a loan reserve that would guarantee the lending, the loans from the lending institutions. We propose doing this pilot project in the Marshall Williamson neighborhood, where there are a lot of homeowners that meet the target range that we would be looking for. And according to U.S. Census, currently, none of those units are using solar power.
Thank you, Hannah. This really is, I can't underscore how important it is for the county to get to net zero. But right now, we're not approaching that at all. The county's goal is to get to 50% greenhouse gas reduction by 2030. We're at about between 1% and 2% of all homeowners in Miami-Dade County with solar power. This needs to accelerate really quickly. So that what we're looking at, there's about 200,000 homes in Miami-Dade County that are earning from $75,000 and under, but this is, it's still solar's out of reach for those families. So what the Net Zero Neighborhood Program does is bring to those families, that's 200,000 homes, that's a huge, that's almost half of the single-family homes in Miami-Dade County, that otherwise are going to struggle to be investing in solar. So that if we miss out on that, that gap, even with huge acceleration in solar investment in the rest of the homeowners in the county, we're not going to get to net zero. We're not going to get to 2050. We're not going to get to 50%. So, we're looking at ways to scale up solar investment, specifically support it for middle-income and lower-income homeowners, and really expand it to, they're left out of the solar conversation at the moment. So we're going to expand them. And we're interested in working in the, in the city's Marshall Williamson neighborhood. We think that's a really appropriate target neighborhood. There are 1,400 families that could possibly qualify, and we think it's a good starter. South Miami has also been a leader in solar energy, so we think it's a, it's a good fit. We'll be talking to you later about specifics of the program, and if the city has an interest. But that's really what we wanted to do tonight. It's really an informational item to tell you where we're going with the program, and that we will be coming to you very soon to talk about launching, how we might launch it in Marshall Williamson. Any questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. What I would like to do now is move that we put the add-on items on the agenda after Item 7.
Second.
Any discussion? All right. Everybody who agrees, say yes?
Yes.
Yes? Anybody say no? Okay. Now, we're moving on, then, to approval of the minutes for June 21st, 2022. Are there any comments? Oh, go ahead. Yes, sorry.
I move to approve the minutes of June 21st, 2022.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments, concerns? All right. All those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No opposed. So the minutes are approved. Madam City Manager, it's your turn.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening. The city's procurement division has achieved re-accreditation with a quality public procurement department standard by the National Institute of Government Purchasing until June 29, 25. The new playground and outdoor fitness structure at South Miami Park will be open to the public on Friday, July 8. Improvement include site restoration, swings, playground structure, port-in-place protective safety surface, fitness structure, new trees, ADA, and pedestrian access to new amenities. Join the Parks Department for its annual back-to-school giveaway on Saturday, July 23rd, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at Marie Park. South Miami residents only. Proof of residencies require first come, first served. The city applied and received $50,000 grant from the FERDA to be used toward new playground structure as Vice Mayor Robert Welsh Park. The item is before you tonight. Last night's Fourth of July celebration at Palmer Park was an incredible success. It was great to see residents gather to celebrate after two years of being unable to host the event. Thank you to our incredible and amazing staff that made the event come to life, particularly to the parks, Mr. Pew, Ms. Yvette Valdez, and the city's police department, and city's public works department. We may have some few pictures, Mr. Riverwell, do we have some pictures that we can share with the residents?
Yeah, I'm loading it now.
Okay.
That concludes the slides and the pictures we have for the event.
As you can see, these were silent fireworks.
I will be happy to put some slideshow for the next commission meeting. This was last night, so busy day, bit briefing today, so we will make sure to have some presentation for the next commission meeting. And that was my report.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. City Attorney?
The Supreme Court ruled on the Clean Power Plan litigation and found that the EPA had exceeded its authority, and that the plan was too expansive, and that in order to do something that expansive, they would need more specific congressional authority. So it's now up to Congress to give the EPA a little more teeth in order to work on curbing climate change through the power grid. We have two appeals. One, I think I previously told you about in the McCormick case, that's up on appeal. And also, we have a code enforcement case involving some pods, portable storage units that were at the Stennis facility. There was an order of the special master, and that's, that's up on appeal now. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. Okay, now it's time for public remarks, and I have the list here of people who have signed up. And so we will start with Hannah Waxman.
She left.
She left already, okay. Laura Telea from Weston. Nan Embezi. No, no, come on up to the podium.
We're, we're here specifically, specifically regarding the CDMP 2022 0004, the proposal to re, do a, redesignate a land use change for the residential property just south of the 711 on 67th and Miller. It's from a state density residential to a business commercial. And we are all neighbors that are, there are hundreds of us that have signed the petition, and we are just appealing to South Miami to support us before, before the county commissioner, before the county commissioner and the, I wasn't ready for this. And, and the Planning and Advisory Board. So, we're just here to say thank you, because we believe that you have decided to support us to reject that land use change request. And we're here to say yay.
Thank you very much. Carmen Alvarez?
And again, thank you very much. This is not the first time that our, the residents of that general area have appealed to the city of South Miami for support. And twice before, in 2017 and 2020, your city was supportive of us before the Board of Commissioners. And we succeeded in opposing and stopping that land use change, and we're here again asking for your support and your, and everything that you can do to help us, because we feel it won't only affect us, but also the city of South Miami. Thank you.
Thank you. Daphne Mersha?
Hello, I also live in the same neighborhood, and I'm also asking for your support in rejecting this proposed change, as I feel that would negatively impact not only my family's life, but also all of my neighbors and everyone in South Miami that lives directly across the street. I also own a home in South Miami that will potentially be, you know, one of my children's homes in the future. So we plan on staying in the area, and we want to keep our community the way it is. And we feel that this change to a residential property, to change it to business commercial, would be detrimental to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Graham Andrew?
Well, good evening, and thank you for taking an interest in this case. I understand that the property in question is outside of your jurisdiction, but I think it will have an impact on some of the residents who live in, in South Miami. So, I think it's appropriate that you are taking an interest in the matter. To be just very concise, I have three principal objections personally to the project. One is, it's a project essentially that seeks to place the interests of two private parties above that of a large and healthy community. And it's, it's a project that ultimately will impose long-term costs on the neighbors in the immediate vicinity and beyond. My second objection really is, oh, excuse me, my, well, further, it was out of order here, but I also object to any suggestion that has been raised by the developer, that the property is somehow unsuited to development for a private, single-home residency. I live adjacent to the property in question, and it's a lot of similar size. With the right kind of mitigation, the law has tremendous potential. One of the things that unites a lot of the neighbors is the fact that we all live in very similar properties. So, the property has been neglected and has clearly fallen into disrepair. At the present moment, it's an unattractive property. The developer is correct in stating would, would not be appealing to people to live in. But with the right attention and investment, I certainly believe, given how tight the real estate market is in Miami, that this is an entirely viable property. And my third objection to the project, and I hope you'll weigh up as well, is that I think in the long term, any change in the designation of the property really opens the doors to anything down the line. And all bets really will be off in terms of where that property ends up. Any change fundamentally will undermine the integrity and well-defined nature of the neighborhood as it stands today. And frankly, I fear that this could undermine the long-term integrity and viability of the, of the neighborhood. So, again, I don't want to take up all my time. I'll leave the remaining 30 seconds. But thank you again for your interest in the issue. And I, I know that we've enjoyed your support in the past, and I hope it's something that we can continue to count on going forward. So, thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you. And now I have Fran Bochuk.
I didn't realize I had signed up. But it's okay. Actually, the last time, my, my name is Fran Bochuk. I live at 5700 Southwest 67th Avenue, which is immediately next door to the property in question. The last time I was here, I did ask the city of South Miami to adopt us. And I got good advice from Bob Welsh.
John? Sorry, ma'am.
No, no, it's okay. Shall I go on?
Please do, I'm sorry.
Okay. He, he gave me the advice that all I had to do was walk in August for about three months, going door-to-door to get adopted. And that time, I was working full-time in two jobs, so I just didn't, was not able to do it. But it's, we'd still like to be adopted. It's actually a very pretty environment. The home in question for, you know, destruction is, got a beautiful backyard. There's a lot of wildlife. It, it adjoins mine. I encourage the wildlife. They're, they're lovely, exciting, and educational. And we just feel like to replace that with something that's just not another necessity, but a convenience of some sort would be very detrimental to the neighborhood environment. And I'm on the very edge of the neighborhood environment. So I hope, please, that you will, you know, consider what we've said, and that we are trying, trying to be responsible neighbors. And I still want to be adopted.
Thank you. Carlos Reyes?
Hi, I just want to say thank you for the support. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Alan Healy?
This is, I'm just reiterating what everybody else has said, that we appreciate the support South Miami gives us, because this property is right across the street from the city of South Miami. And once you open that door, change a designation in a residential neighborhood, allow business to come, it's just going to stretch all the way down 67th Avenue. So thank you.
Thank you. John Edward Smith?
Good evening. I'm not addressing this matter. I'm here to just to highlight a couple of items. Number one, the South Miami Rapid Metro Rail Transit Project, which is unfortunately made, made its way through the Miami-Dade Commission. And it seems we're going to be entertaining another 163-unit student housing project proposed for the city of South Miami. Well, as you all know, this is Miami-Dade County property. And they typically have a very free hand with some concerns raised. But I'm, I really don't think we need to have another housing unit going, you know, student housing unit going in there. It was originally proposed to have a very Class A office building, although, given the, what we've seen with the pandemic and plans after that, anybody that's building an office building has to consult a psychic or something. But certainly, a residential unit of some sort. But I don't think we need more student housing. That's my comment on that. Relative to number one on the agenda for the replacement of street furniture in our town center, typically what you want to do is replace your furniture every 10 years. So it has a refresh look. What we have in our Sunset Drive and in our business district are benches that are unstable. They were put in, I think, probably like 1994, thereabouts, when Sunset Drive was redone. Also, we have these trash receptacles that are, in my opinion, unsightly. And we don't fool anybody by saying we're recycling, because in effect, we don't. Those bins are emptied into one truck. And lastly, I commend the resolution for the city to present the key of the city to the Honorable President of Columbia and the General Counsel. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody in Zoom land who would like to speak now? If so, please raise your virtual hand. I see none. Therefore, the public remarks is now, yes, ma'am? I can't hear you. Laura Telez? Or Hannah Waxman?
It's Adina Garcia, I mean, right off the ground.
Adina?
I think she's third.
So, Adina Garcia, I'm at 6850 Southwest 57th Terrace. And like my neighbors here, I also wanted to thank you for your support in challenging the, the rezoning. Last time I was in these chambers, my daughter was in elementary school, she's in her twenties now, and she received a bicycle for her essay on Earth Day and Tree. So that was the last time. And, and I know how much city of South Miami, she went to South Miami Elementary, which then converted to the K-8. And it's because of that community, because of the schools, because of the children, because of how much this neighborhood means to me. I raised, both my daughters are grown now. And the impact that it will have now on the new generation, on new children that are coming to the school, the, the impact on traffic will directly impact those children that attend the middle school and the K-8 center. And so we thank you for your support, because it's also because of the safety of those children that we oppose this particular rezoning. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Excuse me, Ms. Garcia. What was your first name?
Adina, A-D-I-N-A.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Public remarks is now closed, and it is time for commission reports and discussion and remarks.
I'll start. Thank you, everybody, for coming out this evening. I just first wish to echo what the city manager said about yesterday and the event of 4th of July. Our staff did its Yankee doodle dandiest to put on a good show and, you know, have a safe and a great event. As far as the zoning, I think in 2016, something similar came before this council. And there was two of us up here, not I, I was on up here, but there was two sitting commissioners. I hope to have unanimous agreement on this. I think you'll find that 2016 traditions, still that feeling of that type of development that creeps into our single-family homes, you'll find this City of South Miami opposed to that. So, thank you for coming, and, well, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead. I just wanted to thank everybody for coming out tonight and sharing your thoughts and giving us more detail on this item before we get a chance to discuss and vote on it. I also wanted to thank the city for putting on such an amazing July 4th event. Park, city manager, everybody involved, it really was incredible. And it was incredible to be out there, to see all the residents and non-residents just so excited to be out again and at a big event. And there was just such an incredible energy about it. And the city did a great job capturing that. And we even had these seven-foot-tall aliens with gas guns. It was a thing, and the fireworks were amazing. So, thank you so much for putting on such a good show for people who, I feel, really, really needed it. And I'm also very excited to hear that South Miami Park is going to be opening its playground. Those residents are just so excited about it. And it came out beautifully, the natural canopy, the residents have been posting videos as they go by and images, they're just really excited to see it. And thank you to the city for putting even more emphasis now on ADA-friendly accessories and universal design, which, you know, able-bodied kids also enjoy playing with as well. So, excited for all of that. And again, thank you, everybody, and thank you for coming.
Well, I also, like you, am a neighborhood environmentalist. South Miami is a potentially good neighborhood environment. Of course, we're fighting a major fight to protect from overdevelopment and to protect, well, greed. Money's money, and the rest are us. Anyway, I am the only commissioner who did not attend last night's fireworks, and I've attended all the years many. However, I'm against the fireworks because of the noise and how it frightens all the animals, I'm an animal person, and the smoke and everything else is wiping out the bees and the butterflies and the other things that we really need. So, I didn't attend last night. You know, these fireworks were set off right in the middle of our residence. You could go to the Biltmore and have them set off, you know, just drive over there and have just as big, even bigger fireworks. And it's in the middle of nothing, a golf course, more or less. But here, you've got birds sitting in the trees, right where the fireworks are going off and the explosions. I mean, I know for my animals, they were not thrilled to death with it. Anyway, that's why I'm, you know, I didn't want to have to speak on the fact that I did not show up. But last night, I did not show up. I've been elected for 13 years, and I've been to all of them, but lately, it's just too much, so I didn't go. But anyway, you've got my vote, kids.
Commissioner Liebman?
Thank you. Just want to be the first to wish everyone a happy 4th of July for next year. And I want to thank everyone for coming to speak. I'll tell you, I wasn't sure I was going to support this item, but the first person who spoke was so eloquent that you convinced me. I know you're a little nervous, but you did such a good job that you convinced me. So, but a great point was brought up, and that's that, and several people referred to it, that you really appreciate the representation that you have outside of the area that you live in, in South Miami. And you come into South Miami for that representation, for that personal feel, right, for that support, for that voice. So, as hard as you are campaigning for representation to help you potentially oppose a commercial development in your residential area, you should also consider what one of the speakers said so eloquently, which is becoming part of the city for that representation and to enjoy the best police department in Dade County. And we have the richest garbage services in Dade County for an nominal amount, and I will argue it's the best value. But I'll be happy to do it, and I want to commend Commissioner Gill for putting his name on it and bringing it forward to this commission. So, like, I believe Commissioner Gill, I believe everyone mentioned you should have unanimous support. When you heard everyone else speak about July 4th, just want to say, and in reference being part of South Miami, it makes you so proud to be a South Miamian, to go to such an incredible event that feels so large, the fireworks were too much, but intimate at the same time, where you know everyone and when you even, you know, it spills out into the residential streets. When you walk through the residential streets, you see people gathering their yards or sitting in the back of pickup trucks. It's a small-town intimacy that we often miss in South Miami. And, you know, there's no one to thank for that more than our staff. And I mentioned value earlier, we have the best staff. Not only do they work hard, not only do they do an incredible job, they're the best ambassadors the city has. They are all so passionate and so friendly, from our public works, to our police, to anyone that you'll see in City Hall. And that's top-down and bottom-up, you see it all through our parks and rec. And with that, you know, oftentimes, they recognize the same people over and over again. But I do want to recognize our events coordinator, Yvette Valdez, for just exceeding every event that she does. She, you know, she does a better job the following year. It was an incredible event last night, and the emcee and the music, they weren't playing passively, they were engaging the audience, and you felt it. There was a lot of pent-up demand. We haven't had this event in two years. So it was exceptionally special last night. So again, I want to thank everyone, not just Yvette, but our entire staff and police that worked so hard to make it such a special event. As Commissioner Corey mentioned, not just for our residents, but for the non-residents, because we're simply promoting our city and sharing our resources with other people as well. Something I'm also very proud of is, and you heard Commissioner Harris say that oftentimes we have to fight for things. And one thing that's been a tremendous fight since I've been up here is creating the first sister city in almost 100 years since the city's been around, and that's the sister city with Medellin, Colombia, which was ranked the most innovative city in the world by The Wall Street Journal, and the smartest city in the world by Time Magazine, and they are the recipient of Bloomberg Singular International Environmental Award. It's also the second-largest city in the U.S.'s number-one ally in South and Central America, that's Colombia. The Time tried to pass the people on the commission opposed spending $75 domestically in Washington, D.C. to register the program. Just the other day, in a CIP meeting, had the mayor say that the sculptures that we've received, which is incredibly offensive, were sculptures that nobody wanted, that the artists were just trying to get rid of. Well, as a result of the Sister City program, we've now received 10 donated sculptures worth millions of dollars. Next week, a week from tomorrow, we'll receive our second visit directly related to this project, and only because of this project, from a president. Tiny South Miami is now receiving presidential visits from the U.S.'s number-one ally in South and Central America. It's incredible. And President Ivan Dukey is coming for the second time. The other thing that's happening is the International Book Fair has now selected South Miami as their new home in October to host, well, things, the International Book Fair, which is a sister event, the Miami Book Fair, which is the largest in the country. And they've also received an award from the United Nations, the City Manager of the Seven Points of Sustainability. They're going to donate one of those mobile libraries. And it's just incredible that we're now, because of this project that so many people opposed, starting to attract to national events, and it's South Miami's contribution to the county. It's our contribution in terms of art and culture to greater Miami-Dade. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to take a few moments to let you know a little bit about what's going to be happening before our next commission meeting. Both the city manager, Shari Kamali, and I are going to be sitting on board, on the board of, along with county officials, to be listening about the proposal for the apartment building or student housing building, the 13-story proposal that is going up where the South Miami Metro Rail station is. I took their plans and did some counting, and that's 160 apartments. I don't know where the three other apartments are. And the number of bedrooms is 480. So the possibility is that we have 480 students in that residence. And what bothers me about this sort of plan is that I don't know where South Miami-Dade County is going to get its sewage taken care of. I don't know where we're going to have water in the next 20 years. I mean, already, the Everglades, which is our water source, is being invaded by, or inundated by saltwater. So I think the county has some basic things to think about before it starts putting up apartment buildings for anybody, anywhere. In addition to that, the county mayor has been on a real ramp, a real crusade to get more affordable housing. And I don't know why the county in that, for that, you know, with that as a reality, is proposing to house students who are only going to go, I mean, where else, what other school are they going to go to but a private university? One metro rail stop away. And it's not going to be housing that I think Miami-Dade County students can afford. So, I'm going to be on that board, and I will try to be polite and try to get the other people to see that it's not a great idea. Also, on the same day, in the afternoon, and this is, the one we're going to be sitting on is open to the public to come and speak at. It's at 10 o'clock, right near, right at the metro rail stop at downtown Miami. Also, on the 13th, that RTZ ordinance, the ordinance that will basically says, just build tremendously tall buildings right along the rapid transit lines. You know what's happened, happening in Coral Gables, well, they would like the same sort of thing. And you know what's been happening down at Dade Land, they would like the same sort of thing to happen all along the metro rail and along other fast rapid transit. And I think that, for the time being, South Miami may not have to abide by what they're putting down, because we have zoning that they will approve. We all have, we already have enough latitude to meet the kind of density they would like. But I still wonder, where is the water and where is the sewer? 51% of our community, 51% of our homes, do not have sewer. They're on septic tanks. And as the sea level rises and infiltrates our porous ground and our porous rock, that those septic tanks may stop being useful. So, with all that unhappiness to look at, I really want to say that last night was superb. And anybody who was not able to be there, I pity you. It was, I want to again thank city manager and Quentin Poo and Yvette Valdez. Yvette put such a great lineup of talent in front of us and with such energy. You should have seen that emcee getting those kids going. And I want to thank the police, the park departments, public works, the guys were out there cleaning up garbage, but even as the show was going on, it was wonderful. I thank you all. And so I want to echo that, what Commissioner Liebman has so beautifully said already. And I'm sorry that he has misquoted me about the statues, but that's not unusual. And I thank you for coming down and letting us know why it is so important to you that we pass that particular resolution. Thank you. Thank you. So, we're now moving on to resolution number one. Madam Clerk?
Yes. Item one, a resolution authorizing the city manager to negotiate and enter into a contract with CNI Construction and Design for the bench replacement project in the city of South Miami's hometown district.
I move the item and ask that it be assigned the next number by the city clerk.
Second.
Any discussion about it?
Yes. Thank you. So, this is to continue to beautify our downtown and create some uniformity and place-making. Been working on this for maybe as long as I've been up here. And we're finally in a financial position and have the commission support to do it. So, and our current benches are in terrible shape, probably, not only are they an eyesore, but the bases are rusted out. When you sit on them, it may feel like a nice amenity that they're rocking chairs, but that was never the intention. They're just falling apart. So it's long overdue, we need to pay more attention to our downtown and beautify it. And there's nothing better than benches to do that, to give people a place to sit and rest while they take a coffee or wait for their family members or friends that are shopping. So, yeah, if anyone has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them or the city manager. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I did have just a question or two. Now, I think they're absolutely beautiful, and I'm very excited about replacing the benches in the downtown, certainly. But I was wondering just two questions. One, have these been implemented in any other city? And actually, I saw the designs were great, because without putting the kind of ugly rail in the middle, they're not, they're designed so that you can't lay down on them, which is just brilliant. It doesn't, it doesn't look ugly, it has great form. But I wasn't sure, like, I guess it's a silly question, but has anybody sat down on these things yet, just to see if they're comfortable?
I have not, but I know Commissioner Liebman, you have seen them in person, correct?
Well, something similar. And in terms of sitting down on them, they can't be less comfortable than the current benches. But sitting down on them is equivalent to sitting down on any flat hard surface, because the shape of it won't impact you. But the point of the shape is to do something, which I know, I think you'd appreciate, Commissioner Corey, is to make it unique. I didn't want to repeat something that another city had done. So, they fit the space, they're unique, which gives the city some identity and some branding incorrect. You cannot sleep on them, either sitting down or laying down.
They look comfortable.
It's essentially a flat, hard surface, polished concrete.
Well, they look comfortable, I was just checking.
And you had another question? Mr. Corey? You said you had two.
Oh, that was it.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have a concern? Okay, hearing none. I call the question, Mr. Liebman, how do you vote?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Gill?
Yes.
And I vote yes also. All right. Resolution number two, Madam Clerk?
It's item two, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement and to procure professional construction services from M&amp;J Consulting Group Corp. for a new park improvements at Vice Mayor Robert C. Welsh Jr. Park.
I move that this resolution be adopted and assigned the next number by the city clerk. Second.
Is there any comments, questions?
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I'd just like to ask Commissioner Gill to explain the improvements to the city or to the community.
So, the park has a basketball, a gazebo, a playground, features. It also has a pathway, ADA-compliant pathway. It has an open grassy area in the middle, and I think it'll have some, also some landscaping improvements. So, it's a park that went through a lot of community input, particularly the neighbors. They wanted a basketball court, and our half, it's a half-high school basketball court. And they wanted a gazebo, and they wanted a playground. So, we accommodated that and still gave them a nice, big area where we can still toss a frisbee and such. still, you know, toss a frisbee and such. I, I also want to just thank not only the city manager, but the previous city manager who acquired, Stephen Alga, who acquired the property, the current city manager who got it through the rigorous scrutiny that this project faced or has faced. And it's a wonderful piece of property right next to Ludlum Elementary near, or on the canal. So if you guys want to go see that, that's a real nice little new park that we'll have. Thank you.
I would like to propose an amendment, but that fits in a couple of different places on this resolution. I, I think the park is named after our vice mayor, who was quite a character, who loved to plant trees, particularly Dade County pines. He wanted to reforest the, Miami Dade County, if possible, with these pines and with the live oaks. And so what I would like to do, if possible, is to ask the, the people that we are hiring to put some Dade County pines right near the signs. They've got a bunch of them planned for behind, to the north of the basketball court, but I would like to see them right next to the signs that name the park, you know, Vice Pay, Vice Mayor Robert Welsh Park. So I'm proposing three new whereases, which I would like to have inserted after the third whereas in our resolution. And these, and I've given you all a copy of it, so I'll just read it quickly. Whereas, Vice Mayor Robert Welsh had a personal mission to reforest, reforest Miami Dade County with Dade County pines, also known as South Florida slash pine, and left many small trees so that his common mission could continue. And whereas, the new park improvements do not call for Dade County pines planted near the two signs which name the park for him. And whereas, Mayor Phillips will donate pines to plant near the sign. And so that's where those whereases get inserted after the third one here. And then I would ask, like to add a section four and change four and five to five and six. And so section four would be, and this is, you know, now therefore, if the trees will not interfere with the nearby walkways, the city manager will direct MNJ Consulting Group to plant at least one Dade County pine on each side of both signs.
Second.
Thank you. Any conversation, discussion?
Yes, please. So, I, I appreciate the well-intended ordinance. I, I would just like, considering that this park, as Commissioner Gill mentioned, has gone through a rigorous approval process with so many consultants, including landscape architects, and that these particular pines are so tall, and we've already made many provisions to have a significant number of these pines in the park, I just want to make sure it won't interfere with the, the optics of the park or the usability of the park. Let's not forget that these, in one way it's good, but in another way, the pine needles, when they drop, it can kill anything in the area, so we won't have grass in that middle area, which may encroach in some of the green space. I just want to make sure it fits with the overall plan. And in design, you know, your eye travels to the first large object. So, if we want people's eyes to carry to the end of the park, which is a beautiful fence and a water feature, and the, the water, I don't know if we should, I don't know if consultant would recommend planting tall trees in the front. I understand the correlation with, with former Commissioner Welsh and the trees, but again, there are trees. So I'm fine with it, as long as our Parks Director and landscape architect thinks it's a good idea. I don't, it's hard to do this haphazardly without seeing the, the plan, considering we've already approved the landscaping plan. And I know this is well-intended, so I certainly support the effort.
Well, I mean, as long, as, as Commissioner, as long as it does not interfere with the current landscaping plan.
Yeah. And pine needles actually nourish pine trees. They, they, if they're raked up under the pine trees, that would just help them grow better, so that doesn't have to destroy the grass in any great way. Okay, is there any other discussion about this amendment?
Certainly, to my point, can we, Madam Mayor?
Mr. Liebman?
Yes, thank you. To my point, can we refer to our Parks Director, who's the most familiar with this plan?
As you know, the section four says, if the trees will not interfere with the nearby walkways, the city manager will direct them to plant at least one. Now, there's nobody playing next to those signs. There's nobody throwing balls next to those signs. So I don't see that they'll actually get in the way of any of the use of the park. And if the trees are inappropriate for that place, of course, they won't be planted there. Any other discussion? Okay.
Yes, I'd like to, Parks and Rec Director?
I would like to move now to, we have a vote. Mr. Gill, how do you vote? This is on the amendment. Do we enclose, do we insert this amendment or not?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Liebman?
No.
And I vote yes. So this, now we will, is there any discussion of the resolution as it stands now with the Hearing none, we will vote on it. How do you vote, Mr. Liebman, on this amended resolution?
No.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Gill?
Yes.
And I vote yes also. Moving on now to item three.
Yes. Item three, a resolution authorizing the city manager to expend an amount not to exceed $18,720 for the one solution finance proprietary software upgrade from Central Square Technologies, a sole-source lender.
I move the item.
You have it.
And ask that it be assigned the next number by the city clerk.
Second.
Is there any discussion about this? Any questions? Hearing none. Mr. Liebman, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Gill?
Yes.
And I vote yes also. Item number four.
Item four, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement and to procure professional construction services from Gray Fund Construction Services for new park improvements at Paseo Park.
I move that this resolution be adopted and assigned the next number by the city clerk.
Second.
Any discussion?
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes, sir.
I, I just wanted to thank, again, the city manager and the Parks Director. Located this property, identified this property a little bit over a year ago. The residents are just so excited to be able to activate this, this, this public space. It's coming in with 87% green space. And it just so happens that tonight, John Edward Smith, who in one of the early public meetings recommended the name Paseo Park, which ended up really sticking and everybody liked it, went to both public meetings. Everyone's very enthusiastic, and the Parks Director did a great job taking all the feedback and implementing it into this park. So, it's a, it's a great story. I'm so happy that it's, it's, it's happening.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I just want to thank Commissioner Corey for his efforts, and I want to thank our Parks and Rec Director, Quentin Pugh, for the thorough explanation on the park before the meeting, before this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, Mr. Gill, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Liebman?
Yes.
And I vote yes also. Item number five.
Item five, a resolution of the mayor and city commissioners for the city of South Miami, Florida, objecting to the proposed mixed-use project submitted by TSS Phase One LLC and TSS Phase Two LLC on behalf of Miami Dade County Transit for a property located at the corner of Southwest Seventy-Second Street and Southwest Fifty-Ninth Place.
I move this resolution be adopted and assigned the next number by the city clerk.
Actually, I don't know, I didn't know most of what the whereases here say because they, they were found or agreed to a long time ago, and our city attorney came up with the whereases. And I'm very glad he did because I think these are important facts that the Miami Dade County Commission will need to look at. And so I would very much like to have this forwarded to everybody who might have a say in whether or not the, we have that building built on the corner of Sunset Drive and US-1. Any discussion?
Oh, I agree with you.
Okay.
Then, if, oh, sorry, if I may, Madam Mayor. I was just, I, I wanted to make sure that we all thought about maybe some of the, some of the positives that, that could come from this particular development. So, I know it is student housing, I know it's not necessarily something we would normally promote, and it doesn't fit the exact character of our neighborhood, being one story higher than our max, with the neighbors being so close. But, you know, about 1.5 million in tax revenue likely to come from it, around that amount. On top of that, we actually, in our city, one of our biggest issues with the single-family residents that you'll find when you go door-to-door, is that a lot of the times, they have issues with the, with this college students who are living there, who sort of co-op into homes and have parties. It might be a good thing for them to be able to have density in a space that's close to the school. And I don't necessarily always agree with the environmental concerns of the larger buildings, having to think that the larger buildings are more environmentally friendly, especially considering that for housing costs, you may end up having people closer to the urban development boundary or in very low-lying neighborhoods where, you know, we eventually won't even be able to secure them as, as the water rises. So, I just, I think about those benefits to developments like this as well, so it makes me sometimes hesitant to say that it's, that it's all bad.
Well, the interesting thing is that our zoning allows for eight stories, and then it, people, the builders can go up to 12 if they do affordable housing and a couple of other possibilities per floor. I would, would not be nearly so upset if this were affordable housing on that property. I would welcome having people who could, in there, who would walk downtown to do their jobs, or who would walk downtown to use our restaurants. But I don't see it as appropriate for us to be a bedroom city for a, a non-public educational institution, not on Miami Dade County property, not when the, when the school has plenty of property of its own. Yes, sir.
If we open the doors to a 13-story building, we're opening Pandora's Box, it'll be an inspiration to developers everywhere. Let's not go there. It's not going to really be beneficial.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I simply have a question based on what was just said. So it said that approving 13 stories, so Commissioner Harris said approving 13 stories opens Pandora's Box, but Commissioner Harris approved 18 stories directly across the street, so I really just don't understand that statement. I'd like a further explanation. You approved 18 stories, but 13 stories opens Pandora's Box. Explain the correlation to me.
The correlation was the shops are sunset, and I didn't, I proved it, but everybody else did.
And it is in a very different location from this one, which would tower over anything around it, whereas that one was in a very much a, a commercial district. So, any other discussion?
Yes, please. This is also in a commercial district, and just for the record, the explanation that was given for approving 18 stories, but saying 13 stories Pandora's Box is, is Commissioner Harris said he voted for it simply because everyone else did. That doesn't make sense to me either. It almost makes less sense to me than the first thing you said, but it is a commercial district, and that's a fact based on zoning.
That is not necessary. We're not having disparaging remarks up here. If you have anything that has to do with this further, directly with this as an issue, please say so. Okay, thank you. All right, anybody else have anything? Mr. Gill?
Couple of things. First of all, tonight, we're not approving or disapproving of this project. We, that's not under our purview. It's not up to us to approve or disapprove, as it is like your project. What we're doing here with this project, with this, is either objecting, we're objecting to this. And I, and most certainly, they could care less about our objection. They're going to do this anyway. That's what's going to happen. There is a 1.5 million, and I, and while, yes, this may be for most of the students, but there are students at Miami Dade College in downtown. There are other campuses, small campuses on the rail. You know, there's a lot of graduate students, there's medical, Ross has a medical school still campus here on, on 62nd Avenue. So, I don't, I don't see the, to object to this is fruitless, in my opinion. Something's going to go there, and, and it might as well be student housing. That's all I can say.
Anybody else have anything to say? We each have two times to speak, and I think, Mr. Liebman, you've had your two. Anybody else have something you want to say?
Madam Mayor, and just, just in closing, I, I do believe it'll be somewhat out of character in the sense that it won't have the bonuses that we tend to add on to these buildings and things like that, but for the most part in the area, it is, though, not developed yet, there are buildings up to 12 stories there. So I think it'll be in character in terms of height and density there. That's, that's all.
Okay. Anybody else have anything to say? All right. Mr. Liebman, how do you vote?
I'll support you, Mayor, yes.
Mr. Harris, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Corey, how do you vote?
No.
Mr. Gill, how do you vote? And I vote yes also. Moving on.
I didn't hear Commissioner Gill's vote, I'm sorry.
He said no. We're moving on now to item six.
Item six, a resolution of the mayor and city commissioners of the city of South Miami, Florida, supporting the retention of the Homestead Air Force Base in Miami Dade County and the stationing of aircraft at the base.
I move this resolution be adopted and assigned the next number by the city clerk.
Second.
Thank you. And I went to a meeting, we're at the air force base, with a bunch of South Dade County mayors and, 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 and commercial people. And we heard from the commander of the, of the base, most of these facts that are in here now about how actually this base adds quite a bit to the wealth of the South Dade. And were it to disappear, and all those people who are working there, not only the service people, but also all the civilians that are needed to keep that place alive, it would be a blow to our economy. So, you have read, I believe, the Danielle Kava Levine's, Levine Kava's letter, asking, please, that the United States government, Senator Rubio, support placing the new planes at this base so the base can continue to exist here. And this, and this resolution is just to echo and, and to agree with her. Any questions concerned?
Nope.
All right, well, let's vote. Mr. Liebman, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Gill?
Yes.
And I vote yes also. Number seven.
Item seven, a resolution of the mayor and city commissioners of the city of South Miami, authorizing the city manager to, to pay invoices of outside counsel investigating a complaint.
I move that this resolution be adopted and assigned the next number by the city clerk.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Okay. All those, if, if there's no discussion, Mr. Liebman, how do you go, vote?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Gill?
Yes.
And I vote yes also. Now we go to the add-on item DA.
Add-on A, a resolution of the mayor and city commissioners for the city of South Miami, Florida, opposing comprehensive development master plan application, CDMP 20220004, filed with the Miami Dade County Department of Regulatory and Economic Resources.
I move the item and ask that it be assigned the next number by the city clerk.
Second.
And this was brought forward by?
Commissioner Gill. Yeah, I think we've talked about it pretty much.
Oh, that's, yes, we've been.
I think we've talked about it pretty much during Commissioner Gill.
Okay. All right, there being no further question. Mr. Liebman, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
I vote yes also. Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Gill?
Yes.
Okay. We're moving on then to BD.
Add-on D, a resolution of the mayor and city commissioners of the city of South Miami, presenting Adam Duque Marquez. presenting Ivan Duque Marquez, President of Columbia, and Pedro Valencia Columbia, Consul, the key to the city.
I move that this resolution be adopted and assigned the next number by the city clerk.
Second.
All right, Mr. Liebman, would you like to?
Sure, I would just like to make one amendment on line 14. The date is actually July 13th, and not the 12th.
Second.
It's on line 13.
Correct. So, thank you all, open. The reason is, the consul general, whose sister is the most influential woman in Colombia, and whose grandfather was the president, has been arguably the best consul general in Miami to Columbia, again, which is our number-one ally in South and Central America, and the country where our sister city, Medellin, is based. He's been instrumental in helping us secure 10, donated pieces of artwork collectively worth well into the millions, and has just been a fantastic partner and supporter of the city. So, his term is coming to an end on August 7th, with the new president taking office. And you can't present a key to a consul general without presenting a key to the president, who will also visit the city of South Miami on July 13th. So, it's only proper that we award keys to both the consul general, Pedro Valencia, and the president of Columbia, President Ivan Duque.
Would anybody else like to say something?
I would just like to thank Commissioner Liebman. Obviously, your story of taking this from infancy to presidential visits and the acquisition of millions of dollars' worth of donated artwork to the city, as well as the upcoming events that are being suggested to be there, and the international recognition we're getting for our city that's 2.5 square miles is just an incredible thing. And thank you.
I don't like this at all, because there is absolutely no involvement with the residents of the city of South Miami. None of them have had any input on what is selected, where it's placed, if we even want it. I know that the commissioners have all wanted it. Yes, the commissioners have wanted it. But I do not think that the way in which it has happened is appropriate. And I do not think that either of these men have done anything much for South Miami. The artists have, the man that is the curator has, the man, the curator was the man who laid out the design of where these statues were supposed to go. He might be someone to get the key to the city. Or perhaps our own Commissioner Liebman should get the key to the city for this project. But I don't see how these two people are involved at all with the city of South Miami. There have been no people from South Miami on the sister city committee. There is no such thing as a committee, although it was formed. There have been no people on the arts and public places helping to design this. And so, it's a project that one person has done. He's done it well, but it isn't the city of South Miami's project. And I do not support giving the president of Columbia and the vice counsel, and the counsel, a key to our city, just because they happen to know one of our residents. Is there any other discussion?
Yes, if I may.
Yes, this is your last time.
Okay, thank you. I'll respond to that, and it's something I said earlier. The consul general has been instrumental with the donation of the majority of these sculptures. It's been instrumental in bringing the president to this city twice. So, I think that's pretty impressive. The president, the US's number-one ally in South and Central America, the only time this city has received a scheduled visit from any president, this tiny city. The consul general is directly responsible for the president's second visit, and only twice in 100 years, and the donation of millions of dollars of sculptures. So, I completely disagree with what was just said, that the consul general has not been involved, or not made any contributions to the city. I think that is factually incorrect. And what I said earlier about saying that the sculptures, 10 sculptures that were donated, some worth over $350,000, are sculptures that no one wants, and the artists are trying to get rid of. If anyone thinks those were misquoted, it's on video. You can watch that. I think that was outright disrespectful.
I would like you to stop this disparaging remarks, please.
I'm not disparaging anyone, there was not a disparaging mark.
Would you stop disparaging, please?
I'm repeating what I said.
Would you stop disparaging, please?
Point of order, Mr. City Attorney, may I have a vote of the commission? If I'm out of order?
You are not talking to the contents of this.
I am speaking to the contents of this item.
You are not talking to the contents of this.
The context of this item.
Of this item.
I am.
Would you please stop talking?
Okay, point of order, may I have a second?
You are out of order, sir. When I ask you to stop talking, and you continue, you are out of order.
It's commission, it's our mayor, disrespect the president and artists that are donating sculptures.
I would like to call the item to question.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Liebman, how do you vote?
I have a question, I have a question. Mr. City Attorney, they moved, they changed the date. Is that just a scriptural error, or do they need to vote on that?
Well, it's stupid to have to put in a date when the guys aren't even going to be here. Madam Mayor?
I'm sorry. A change would require a vote, so.
Okay, it was moved and seconded, so I need a vote.
Okay, then, let's vote now on whether or not we are changing line, item, line 14 to July 13 from July 12. Mr. Liebman, how do you vote?
Yes, and the president is coming to South Miami.
Mr. Harris, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Corey, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Gill, how do you vote? And I vote yes also. Now, we're voting on the resolution as a whole with the amendment. Mr. Liebman, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Gill, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Harris, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Corey, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote no. All right, we're now up to item eight.
Item number eight, a resolution relating to the year 2022 general election of the mayor and city commissioners for Groups One and Four, scheduling the day, place, and time of the election, providing for qualification of candidates, providing for close of election books, approving the sample ballot, providing for notification.
I move that this resolution be adopted and assigned the next number by the city clerk.
Second.
All right, this item is open for public comment. Is there anybody who would like to speak to it? Seeing none, is there anybody in Zoomland? If so, please raise your virtual hand. All right. Hearing none, seeing none, the public speaking is closed. Does anybody on the dais have anything to say? All right. We will vote. Mr. Liebman, how do you vote? Mr. Harris, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Corey, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Gill, how do you vote? And I vote yes also. Please show in the minutes that Mr. Liebman walked out. There being no further business for us today, the meeting is adjourned.